What's the order, Jack?
I don't know.
Options are there?
Uh, our website.
For us.
You're leaving.
You don't belong to the rest of the job.
Who's up here for lines currently?
I don't think that's at home.
I mean, all the people who have a truck to the church and then unpack and before you know it, it's eight, ten minutes.
Great.
And see the beginning of the meeting.
Now, I'm not working.
That's a life, so.
It's got to be.
So Dan's in, uh, Dan's in Florida.
The cops on the side of the train.
Dan, Dan, the travel.
Yeah, he was in Orlando yesterday.
Updated hopes.
I thought they were used there.
Yeah. But so far, it's all.
One, two.
If we use two, well, rescue's gonna be there not all half of them.
Well, it's seven o'clock and we don't have any air conditioning in here, so we'll just start.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll just start right at the top. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And, uh, as mentioned, Dan's in, uh, Florida for conferences related to his work. So we will start off with, uh, Chief Jenkins giving his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's spread it out.
Uh, just a couple of things. I met with, uh, Pastor Page here, uh, at Scottsville Police Department. Um, I had that meeting with, uh, Gene Stewart, who is from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and one of his staff members, Deputy Chief John Prandy and, uh, Jack. And once I'm finished with my update, I think Jack would like to speak briefly on, um, Task Force Seventeen's group, uh, and what their refocus is gonna be when it comes to emergency management. Um, so give it a couple of significant calls for service this past, uh, month. You can see here, we've responded to a couple of felonious assaults. One was at the Dollar General store. Officer Barnett made an arrest in that. And then another one on, uh, the Eighteenth down here on Valley Street, and Officer Wood made an arrest in that case. That case looks like it's gonna be resolved pretty quickly, uh, through the Commonwealth Office. Um, we found some more, set, found that graffiti down at the, uh, Bubbling, I think. And I attached a picture up. The mayor had a, a good idea of trying to remove one of those sections of, uh, ladder into that tower down there. That tower is actually owned and managed by the National Geo- Geograph.
I could've told you, bad master.
I can't remember. I, I was telling the mayor about it today. United States. Do you guys see that?
Geodesic survey people. Yeah.
But Tim Carr was telling me that it would take him forever to get back with us. And, uh, we told him that we had, uh, cleaned up the graffiti on it and we had made a fix to the ladder, so they seem to be fine with it. They are gonna come down and actually look at the solar panels on the top of that thing just to make sure they weren't damaged or anything. Um, we also found a couple of spray paints out at the, um, Bank Creek property that has been since taken care of as well. Looked like the same type of images. Uh, I haven't put a camera out there as of yet. One time, uh, over there at the parking area, I'm not sure that it would be worth hours, staff hours, to put a camera over there, but we have any more incidents over there than I'll put a camera over here.
Can you put a, I mean, like, well, I guess somebody mentioned this, can you put a, like, sign, even though you don't have a camera, you say, being surveyed or whatever, being monitored? So somebody looks at that and says, wow, I want camera. Not, but, uh, they might not know.
Yeah. Absolutely. You remember Radio Shack, when it was in existence, you could buy decals there that said, they, uh, residents under surveillance. Uh, you know, to keep on the search. There's no camera anywhere, but you stick them up.
I don't know. The, uh, bridge has kind of stopped since we've got a camera up there.
You think it's the same person?
I don't know. I did, you know, Matt and I both posted it on our social media pages, and I got one tip down here shortly after one vehicle. So the same guy that was spray painting under the bridge up here was definitely the same guy that was putting the stickers on the light poles, but I was never able to get a name of who was doing it. Got a vehicle description, but it would be anybody, you know? Um, let's see, oh, last night, just on this past weekend, so if you all know, it looks like we might have had one of our residents or, uh, we think, and we're working, and we've got videos, we're trying to get the video and cameras. Got a vehicle description laying down here at Lucky's. Feels like she might have been shot with a BB or something come out of a car window. So Officer Wood got the video from the vehicle passing by, and we see three people on it, but we don't see a weapon out there. So we're trying to get video cleaned up, at least we need problems with that, and see if we can actually see a weapon out there. But she does have an injury to her leg. She initially thought that it was an air assault on, but could be a handgun as well, so we'll. And she's going to the doctor to have the leg looked there, might be in her leg. We've searched the area over here, can't find it, so. Uh, just so you all know, we are trying to. Did you all hear about the two Cadillac converters, the vehicles that were stolen with the Cadillac converters? That was.
From our vehicle.
Two vans up here, noise shop. Friday night, Saturday morning, someone come onto his lot, and the two big vans that are there, they actually have two Cadillac converters per van on. Cut all four of them off. Cost the man almost five thousand dollars to fix one of the vans. So working with Floyd, uh, Lloyd, and hopefully Heinz, maybe they'll help us get some video cameras up around that business up there, because that's where his trailer was stolen. We did arrest the boy that we suspect stole the trailer, uh, but we didn't wanna ask him specifically about the trailer yet. Now, I confirm with ACPD, so they're pretty much done with their investigation. They don't have enough. The, uh, witnesses that saw the crash over in Buckingham couldn't identify the suspect a hundred percent. Only an eighty percent positive ID. It's who we thought it was, but still not identified. So we're still working on that, um, and hopefully we can figure out where Heinz's trailer. But my purpose in saying all that is what we're doing is really trying to alternate or really, uh, flex our working hours at nighttime, just so there's that presence down here after twelve thirty, one o'clock in the day, especially on the weekends. So giving the officers the flexibility to kind of move their schedules around as these events happen, uh, to try to see what could make, catch whoever's doing some of this stuff, okay? Yeah. Uh, community policing events, this was a relative of a slow month. The pastor's council meeting was actually canceled, and the next one is scheduled for the twenty-fifth. We had a very light showing, uh, out here at, uh, National Night Out on August the second. Uh, you can see that hours for auxiliary police officers. I started that over again this month, so that's why I did all of the reviews. But last year, for the entire year, I guess that was just since I started, January to July, about seventy-three thousand dollars, seven, four thousand dollars in time that those officers contributed to the police department of town. Uh, policies, it should hopefully be done with our policy manual, hopefully about October, November, at the last of our policies, uh, review, and then we'll be done with that part of it. Uh, portable radio, transition with our mobile radios, that process is done, we're finished with that. So all of our portable radios and all of our mobile radios, in-car radios, have all been replaced and reprogrammed. Um, that's about a fifty thousand dollar project that the county helped fund through their CIP process. Uh, I think I got it, had everyone had a chance to, uh, see the kits of the hurricane kits that's on the street, officers have been trained. I met with, uh, Reverend Dollar Day. He brought him on as, uh, the police department's chaplain for the department, and that will actually help us stay in line with DOJ's and the, uh, DCJS's requirements, uh, as far as officer wellness policies go. Um, we were very fortunate, we received, I got notification in there last week. We got DCJS five ninety-nine grant funds was approved for the town, and that was fifteen thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars. Mister Bowlin and the mayor and I had some brief conversation about the, uh, town's noise ordinance. A couple of weeks ago, I got a complaint on noise and was just curious about the towns and the ordinance and how we would go about actually doing any enforcement on the noise ordinance. Mister Bowlin may speak a little bit more to it. I think as the town ordinance, it's nineteen ninety-six ordinance, I think right now we would be fine to enforce it as long as we had a decibel reader and had the decibel reader calibrated with the other departments or jurisdictions' policies look like about every twelve months. Most likely, if that thing calibrated, before we could actually place a charge on someone violating the noise ordinance as it exists at that point.
When you do that decibel read, do you do that from the place of the complaint? Or do you do that at the site where the noise is generated?
So Mister Bowlin, the way I read that, there's different code sections and the different ordinances from the other two jurisdictions. I think, I think the, uh, the appellate court said that you have to have, what is it, the time of day and decibel read, or you have to have distance along with the time of day in the noise ordinances themselves. So it would be, if it was a public space, then you would have to take a couple of readings from the public space. If it was in a person's private home, you know, that was, that would be things that, as council, you all would have to decide what that ordinance would look like, in either one.
Just mayor.
Yes.
The council addressed this about, what, eight, ten, eight, nine years ago?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, what, what they determined was it, uh, it was actually, the enforcement was gonna be more trouble than it was worth. Um, if you have a noise problem, I think the chief is capable of handling that on a case-by-case basis. Um, and I think you've got, um, uh, other criminal actions, criminal codes you can use if there really is a problem, or some, in other words, chief, somebody won't listen to you. You go down and say, you gotta quiet the party down, and they just turn it up after you leave, and they do it again, that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, uh, we've never gotten to the point where you had to go to the expense of having a calibrated, uh, decibel reading, and that's the true way to enforce a noise ordinance, because otherwise you get into endless discussions over, uh, whether or not your, um, officer was subjective, and the trouble with all this, that you're in the free speech area, and so because you're a governmental entity, if you arrest somebody on this basis, uh, you potentially created a, um, uh, First Amendment case, uh, which you really wanna try to avoid if you can. Um, I don't know, you mean, chief, you've been here for a while, what, what kind of noise trouble have you had? I mean, I know from time to time, there's loud noises, but.
It was basis for the complaint on this. Uh, it was from over at our fire department. They've got an outdoor speaker on the exterior of the fire department. And I talked to, to Chief Brinstaff about the, the speaker, and it's a new protocol that Alamo County with all of the fire stations went to. And what they do is they, their radio call, their, their radio system from outside is now, Mike, I guess, put on a speaker on the outside of the building, so the staff on the outside, it might be in the lot, hearing calls for service that might be coming through, and they don't miss a call. Um, that was the basis. I talked to Mike, and Mike said it was a new protocol. Uh, it's all electronic, and it's throughout the entire county with all of the fire stations, but he did assure me that he would work at trying to get the volume cut down. And I haven't gotten any more of complaints, uh, from it, so I'm hopeful that, that the chief over there at the fire station is able to help me take care of the fire.
Could chief, it sounds, chief, it sounds like that that's, it could really be a problem. It's late at night, you've got an outside speaker, and you've got some residents nearby. I wouldn't like that too much.
I think the hours of operation on that thing are from eight o'clock in the morning until six, six PM or eight PM at night.
Okay, well, that sounds pretty good.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
That's sort of, you know, when we, when the brewery opened and they started having live music, and then we started getting noise complaints from everywhere, and I could hear them way up at my house. You just go and talk to them, and they pounded it down. Uh, so.
Most of the time works.
Yeah, most of the time.
Most of the time it works.
I guess my question to you is, would a more specific ordinance help you with enforcement and responding to concerns?
So this is in the, what, seven and seven and a half months that I've been here. This is really my first noise complaint that I've had in the town. Um, I would say to council at this point, if, if, if noise become a problem, I really would encourage this council to really take a look at the nineteen ninety-six ordinance that we have in place that covers us now, uh, and Jim and I would have to really work with council to really figure out what it is that you all wanted us to look at. Like I said, it's time of day and distance from where the noise is being emanated, or time of day with the decibel read. It's really, some of that, Jim, the way I read that, that information you sent to me, those two, two really are the only alternatives that we would have to.
That's right, and to the degree that you're relying upon the officer's subjective, uh, judgment, then you expose yourself to this, to the complaint under the First Amendment for, and attorney's fees and so forth, and, uh, um, but I, I, as I said, I haven't seen this as a huge problem so far, and, and in the past, it's been, we, the town has been able to ameliorate the problem through the, the, um, um, good enforcement and good common sense of the police department and the citizens.
But so far, I haven't had any real major issues, loud music in cars, but they come and they go off the road and gone.
Just, uh, you know, kind of keep in mind, if, if complaints start coming in, the noise, just keep us posted, and then if we need to do something, we'll do it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I used to, when I was in law enforcement, every Sunday morning, I had to go to the same church because the guy that lived in the trailer over there could hear them from across the parking lot. I had to sell the parking lot, see if I could hear a rumble. Some people just wanna complain.
I used to hear a lot of gunshots, especially before hunting season. I don't know if that's a problem, is that covered by that at all either? But sometimes I think it's just practicing, it's pretty loud.
So, so in the town, there is no shooting, no fire.
Oh, so it might be outside.
But in, in Alamo County, the way Alamo ordinance is written is really for an officer to be able to force, enforce it, it is that distance and time of day. Gunfire is actually exempt completely from the noise ordinance.
No.
So you can fire any time of the day, night, it doesn't matter, uh, in Alamo County. But the town men, town women, it's really discharge a fire on the town limits. So far, that's the only complaint that I've gotten on the noise, so it's been pretty good. But, you know, it was definitely a conversation that, that I just wanted to get my mind around in case we did have a problem. Jim and the mayor was very comfortable with giving me the information where the town was at before, which was very comfortable. Funny. I don't know, Jack, did you wanna cover what the, so briefly, uh?
So we met, but we don't, it was last week.
It was last week.
So last week, we met with the, uh, Regional Three Coordination for State Emergency Management officials. Um, some things that we came up with, saying that we, our county's in charge of damage assessment for town Scottsville, and all on my county now, so we decided, due to US Fire Administration requirements, um, that we will start having a rehab team for all Scottsville incidents, that the task force will provide all the cooling stuff, drinks, and ice for all incidents related to town Scottsville. And in near future, we'll be working on with, um, our county primary emergency manager with establishing community assessment, um, form to make sure everybody's accounted for, make sure everybody is okay after an actual disaster hits. I know that mental health is the most important part of it, so we're focusing on that in the near future when everything gets up. So far, account numbers for, um, since January third, were four thousand hours that we provided to community for weather incidences.
I think some of the big concern was the way the task force worded their damage assessments was in conflict with OEM's true damage assessment, and we wanted to make sure that citizens, if there was another storm that come through Scottsville, that citizens didn't, uh, mix up the two, and it really has to go through OEM, so.
Like city, uh, period or something?
So Jack and his team have taken a refocus, so what they're gonna do for the town.
Who, who activates Jack's team? Does he call, does he call you and say, can I, do you need my help, or do you call him and say, can you get here?
I think. I don't know if we figured that part of it. The way we left it, before Jack's team would deploy anywhere, he would communicate with the chief's office here in town or with Deputy Chief O'Prandy's office, uh, at AC, or Alamo County, who is actually the county's, uh, emergency manager. So we don't have, hopefully, we won't have any self-deployments, and our, our residents and business owners will understand if there's true damage, then they need to go through the Alamo County Emergency Management Group and not Task Force Seventeen. So I think we got to a place in that meeting last week where we're all on the same sheet of paper.
And that's helpful.
Then also, we're gonna try and, uh, they're waiting, I guess they're short-staffed right now, so they're just way behind schedule, um, that they're trying to get a, um, trying to restructure their whole cert program, and so we're trying to see where we get to in that part of the structure of, if you do that, and then what the. And so we're trying to see where we get to that part of the structure of, if you do that and then what the, you're going to try and get some fundraising started. So maybe work with Alex to try and get some bits down here to fundraise. So I think this will cost zero dollars to town. It's my plan and everything completely not problematic.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate all you do, all you have done, all you continue to do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief or Jack, either one? Thank you both and appreciate all your time and efforts. Chamber of Commerce had a board meeting this past Wednesday and two things out of that meeting, we, with the couple of years of pandemic isolation, we are way behind on officially recognizing new businesses with ribbon cutting. So we're getting back into that. If you want to mark your calendar, the, if you remember during the Shark Pack thing, the small business development people, the Mr. Anderson, William Anderson, the security guy, who wanted to start a security firm here, went to visit him on this past Friday, I guess it was. And we are going to do his ribbon cutting on the last Friday of this month, the 26th of August at 11 o'clock in front of his store. And I'm lining up the TV and the newspaper to be there. And then in September, we'll try to do the attorneys next door. And then we'll work our way around to others that we have missed over the last couple of years.
Great.
The other thing we decided on at the, we have been put in touch with someone who is really good and very fair in their pricing of doing, revamping the website for the, for the chamber. And if Government Services hasn't done anything on that yet or hasn't had an opportunity to talk to anybody, this guy is willing to talk to Matt also about working for the town too, to revamp the town website and get everything up to date, running, keep it, keep it current. It's very reasonable who's causing it, but he seems to be real professional.
If you could send the name, whatever, to us, there's a woman who's new to our, I think more, she seemed like she knows. Their website's in and out, so.
Certainly we can get it for free, that's one.
Yeah, that's a real good question. Yeah, that'd be great.
So that's Chamber ARB, Mr. Bullock.
Yep, we didn't have any new business this month. Although there is a lot of nice updates going on. So COAs that were issued in the last six months or so and I started to really kind of fruition on the town. Windows are going up, rehabilitation going the way, so that's good to see. Most of our time is actually spent talking about enforcement on poor condition properties, which all pass their 90-day requirements to meet with the ARB before incurring fines. And of course, all they have to do is meet with us, come up with a plan to start remediation. That's like what they, that's what we have to do. We're looking at buildings, of course, that are unsealed or have some kind of structural issue. Last year, we decided to move forward with legal action on a property. And then Mr. Bowling advised us not to pursue that legal action at the time, feeling that our own communication with property owners was not quite on point enough. And so Matt did his due diligence this year after our inventory, we identified poor condition properties. I think there might have been 11, fewer than previously, which is good to see. But to make sure that communication was clear about timeline, expectations for meeting with the board, problems with the property, as well as the legal ramifications for not meeting coming up with COA. So, and this council has been supportive of us pursuing legal action, which is new as far as Scottsville Town Councils go. Some have asked that not to. And I think this council has been supportive of it because we've recognized that there are some serious issues related to our historic buildings that need to be addressed formally. And so what I did was set up criteria with the board. So we discussed what criteria should be used to evaluate the poor condition properties before moving forward with legal action this year. And we came up with five criteria. One, the historic nature of the building. The second was its location in town. So how prominent is the feature to the town, the landscape? Negligence, so how long historically have we gone without meeting with the property owner about said property? The kinds of problems that are related to deterioration was our fourth. And within that, there were two characteristics. One, the envelope of the building. So is it unsealed in some way? And second was the actual structure of the building, which for us usually is the foundation. And then fifthly, the potential use to the town of the building. So we were also considering sort of what is this thing or could it be? Five, four properties, five properties were of particular interest to us. The Dollhouse on East Main Street, which we pursued legal action last year. Three something on Harrison Street, which is currently a rental property and has some foundation issues. The Tutweiler Building, which is down by the levee wall, historic boat building. The Stinson House, it's across the street from the brewery there, and Canal Basin Warehouse. Of those five, the Dollhouse is the only one that tripped every single one of those criteria. It is one of the most historic and oldest buildings in town. It is significantly prominent in the fabric of our downtown storage district. Property owner has been at least three years negligent on meeting with us anywhere. The kind of problems with both the envelope and the structure, there is now a broken window on one side of the building. The roof is open at the top, so the, the slate, slate's starting to come loose, chimney deteriorated and there's foundation issues. And in terms of use to the town, it could be useful. I mean, I don't know if it could be an Airbnb or something, but it could be something. And so since it tripped all of those things for us, we decided to, we made a motion as a board to move forward with legal action on that property. So what does that mean? Matt's going to inform the property owner that we will now proceed with a court hearing to get you before a judge to then compel you to meet with the ARB, or you can just come meet with the ARB and then we don't go to court. And again, the expectation is you meet with us, we identify the problems, then we come up with a plan for resolving it. And with all of these properties that have been poor condition, you really just need to see ongoing work and improvement. The Canal Warehouse is an example of that. That work has been really slow. But the fact that Mr. Neighbors would meet with us annually, talk about what was happening, we'd get there. And, and in talking about the Canal Warehouse, which was one of these properties we couldn't afford with, Matt said that that one and the Stinson House, because there have been now ongoing discussions with the property owner, that a judge would throw those out. There was at least some due diligence on part of the property owner. So we moved forward to the Dollhouse and hopefully we'll meet with them sooner rather than later to start addressing how to shore up the building. Other than that, so that was the majority of our meeting. There was really robust discussion about that. Then I just sort of dropped some informational items on that, about the clutter ordinance, which is sort of leading through the government services thing. And then we also, Matt shared a preservation Piedmont grant with me. Preservation Piedmont, sort of a local group of preservationists, one way or another, historical societies, towns, counties. And they have a grant program for something like $3,000, which the ARB doesn't necessarily want, but I suggested to the ARB and Matt that if the town applied for it, we could apply that $3,000 to a publicly owned historic building. We're sitting in one, so it could be like New North's downstairs, which we need. Or it could be maybe Canal Basin Square. So anyway, so I suggested that Matt contact Preservation Piedmont people just to see where they are with the grant process and what we might be able to use it for. That's all for me.
Which house is the Dollhouse?
It's right across from the building. One sort of stone foundation, second floor, yeah, single floor building.
Kind of right next to the museum?
Yeah, company down.
Do you know anything about the property there? It's kind of funky with all three of those houses.
Yes, I don't. However, we did get some professional advice at our meetings related to that. And it's kind of a mess in terms like who owns well, although apparently the Dollhouse has the clearest title. But there are like somewhere in a trust, one property owner owns another one, another property. So it's a little messy, but we know who the owner is, we know who to communicate with, and it's not in a trust. So I think Matt felt confident we'd be able to communicate well around that.
Any questions for Matt, I mean, from Mr. Bullock? All right, since Dan is not here, Javier has some notes from Planning Commission.
Yes, so since I attended Planning Commission this month, I first want to start off with some notes that Crisco shared with everyone here, but just in general. At the beginning, we share, he shared, Crisco, a little bit about the Emerald Necklace of Scottsville, which is the project of connecting all of our public trails and public parks together, based off of a project in, for Olmstead, which is a project in the Boston area, doing the same thing, connecting around the city, the parks and trails together. Inviting kind of the planning commission to take this on and kind of shepherd it a little bit in regards to recent developments as something that can be a project in the public amenity for the town of Scottsville. Additionally, there was a lengthy conversation about PUDs again. Planning Commission came to consensus that they wanted to review again our comprehensive plan, which is reaching the five-year point for an update. Essentially to give some grounding and some context of the comprehensive plan to be able to further feel comfortable with moving ahead on a PUD. Part of that is that Planning Commission is going to take some time, August 22nd, in a special session here at Town Hall to continue discussing the comprehensive plan together, work a little bit on that in relation to the PUD and then hope that they can move along to further develop something that be mature enough to bring it to Town Council at that point. Beyond that, I wanted to also share that another important agenda item for Planning Commission was that there was a preliminary subdivision review for parcel ID 13043D, which is the colloquially the 33 houses on Bird Street. We were presented a site plan and there was a little bit of discussion with the developers and those working on it to explain a little bit about the site. There's no action at the moment. It was really a preliminary discussion and comment on the application. I think they still have to come back with a preliminary plan and go through the processes with the county and with the town of Scottsville in regards to a variety of things they have to do for the site plan. And I think that would be the big points from Planning Commission.
Any questions on Plan?
I don't know if they brought it up, but they're supposed to do an environmental study. Have that, have that been planned yet or scheduled?
I'm not sure. I follow up with Matt.
Sounds like that's sort of, you know, that's pushable, I think, before they should go any further. I know that was part of it. That's one of the conditions.
I think there's some environmental studies that the county ends up applying, but I can go into details.
It's a phase two, whatever this is, pretty well, and the hillside.
Any other questions? If not, since Javier has the floor, you have a treasure report.
So as next upcoming regular session, I'll be sharing the first month we have of fiscal year 2023. So I'll be sharing a financial statement with Town Council as we start a new year. Beyond that, I think the only piece of news is that interest rates went up a little bit. It's not a fortune, but we are earning a little bit more off of our, of our cadwall funds. Beyond that, I think we're just starting a new fiscal year and I hope to share a financial statement with you during regular session next Monday. Thank you.
Well, I was curious with the fiscal year, I think it's about the year from the DMB, are we going to, is there going to be an update of whether that's, how that's doing? And whether we're going to continue with this or is that year to year? Because I know there was a startup cost and stuff like that, but I just wondered if you say. Find out like, is that a moneymaker or?
Let me look at that.
I think that was a, I think when they started that was to see how things worked with that. After a year, I think it's a good time to kind of see.
Well, we were told right upfront, it'd be a couple of years.
A couple of years. Oh, really?
Yeah.
A couple of years, okay.
So we had to put out what $100,000 plus to get it started.
So the DMV is now just open for walk-ins, right? Okay, there are two prominent signs outside that still say by appointment only, and I think those should come down tomorrow.
It's on the website like that too, right?
Yeah, all that's got to be.
I'm not sure. Does the town or does the DMV manage the DMV? I mean, is, do we, the elected employees, are they town employees?
They are.
Okay, okay, so, so, so they need to be told that, you know, follow that, you know, what's on that website and what's, you know, okay.
I tried to take the thing down the other day, but I think I had to get a ladder.
Let's just go to the tallest one out there.
I just couldn't get it done.
There's also a piece of paper on the handicap accessible door too, that says very strongly that it's by appointment, so.
Okay.
And it seems.
Just another, just a minor thing, but you know, you call, you call the town office and a lot of times the first thing it says is DMV. I think it should be the other way around. It said, this is the town office of Scottsville. And we also do the DMV, but it almost seems like backwards to me. They could do that with the answering machine or whatever.
I could look into the answering machine.
Yes.
For my time.
Yeah, yeah.
I can mess around with it. Beyond that, I think Matt in an email suggested more into the fall to do an assessment since we'll be like fully staffed and we'll have enough time just to kind of spread out different things that we need assessed, topics that we need to assess by Town Council.
Anything else on that? All right. So my report had a call saying that the recycled dumpster over behind the apartments was full and overflowing. Can you find a number to call and get that thing taken care of?
Up to the town. But we did find a blast, we were reaching out to the dumpster behind.
Yeah. Yeah.
It comes to mind in general.
Okay.
Usually you could call Amy Smith. She's really good coordinating everything over the parks. Amy Smith, yeah. As we talk, they have a dumpster for trash there too, and it wasn't put down in the right place. So trucks can't get in there, so she took, they took care of that.
Now I remember it's not the kind of parts, it's not poisonous, that were banned. That's over the last week, it accidentally increased their scale. I pulled up the person, right, and that's low nonprofit that our house there. It's surprising.
It was initially a Girl Scout budget. That's why it got there. Thanks to the Girl Scouts. I need to ask the beautification committee, can you check or try to determine there's three half barrel flower things in front of the museum on the sidewalk?
Okay.
I need to find out if there's the towns or if there are the museums. The museum seems to think there are the towns. One of them's falling apart, everything in them is dead. And if they're ours, we need to do something. So if they're not, let me know and I'll get the museum to do something. Thank you on that one. Under, under economic development, ran into a lady the other day in Charlottesville, who was telling me her husband has a business and he's looking to relocate and even might like to come to Scottsville. He does virtual design, which is kind of new to me, but he sent me his portfolio. And so, so you want to remodel your bathroom, you sit down with him and he puts all these computer generated pictures of how you could do this with the shower and that with the sink and all that stuff, or you know, anything in the house. So I'm trying to line up a meeting between he, between him and Matt and myself, so we can, Matt can tell them all about starting a business in town. And he lives over in the Waynesboro area right now. I did my PR job Saturday when this big motorcycle club rolled into the farmer's market and went over and introduced myself and they were from actually all over Virginia. Nice bunch of people and they were kind of surprised that, you know, somebody would come over, welcome to the town. If I could be in here and see if they had any questions. So that was my PR. I think everybody has received the, the manual for the Freedom of Information Act training. Just make sure you read that paragraph. And this, this is no reflection on anybody. I know y'all, there's several of you that like to, after the meeting, go out and have a cigarette, you know, chat for a while, but if it's more than two council people present, don't discuss council business, town business, you can't do that. If there's three people standing there and you're all talking about town business, that's an awful town meeting. And you can get in big trouble for that.
Of course, I want to make sure that does not happen.
I appreciate it. I know you I knew I figured you were probably on top of this. But sometimes people forget, you know, and they start talking.
I will not.
You can be a little parking lot monitor. We appreciate it. Yeah.
We're just taking notes.
We just don't have a budget for law. Lawsuits. And the last thing is just a, you know, special thank you to Javier and Cody and Lewis Cable. Cleaning up, you know, Mr. Cable. He called me about it and I didn't know about it. I got in touch, you know, Javier. He said that Lewis was playing a big hand in getting things cleaned up down the boat ramp, so. I have emailed him and thanked him for it, but if you see him again, tell me my thank you.
Yeah.
Again, next week at the program.
He told me and told you guys where I pop. I was I was out of state. That's great. It's like that. Open.
So that's all I have.
You take that out of the way that that happened. That was great.
They have a couple of things more for next week that I'm working on. See what happens, but if you have any questions, be glad to answer them. And if not, last, Mr. Bowling, you got any words of wisdom?
I wish I well, sometimes I have some words of wisdom, but tonight I've already talked about the noise ordinance. And that's mostly what I was going to talk to you about. But we went ahead and did that with the chief. Zach, on the ARB matter, will you help me make sure that Matt runs this letter by me before he sends it out?
Okay.
It's a technical document and I've given him help and. And you have to have the the various and sundry items in the letter or you can't achieve the result that you want to achieve. Which is essentially when you go to court and they don't show up. At the at the ARB and they don't do it, don't appeal the decision for thirty days. The matter is a thing decided which keeps you from having to litigate the issue, which can be enormously time consuming.
Yeah, the best way to communication wise, Jim, would probably be for you to email Matt and CC me. That that would probably be the best way to do it.
I'm gonna do that then.
Yeah, because I think he's already, after our meeting, he was gonna start ball rolling, so.
Right, but he starts the ball rolling, he jumps the gun and and then it's just, you know, it's it's self-defeating.
That's right. Yeah, so I you should email it.
Well, you follow up, okay?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
I mean, it's not that difficult, but it's very important.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Bowling? About the town clerk, does he have anything else?
Yes. So I think in anticipation, I think it was expressed from town council that we had interest in re-испорing clutter ordinances. So I can't speak in detail about Matt seeking on to follow up. A little bit and start to prepare something for our session. First, I want to move out in regards to housekeeping. Planning Commission helped the O R M O B's appointments. She shared that with me last session, so we'll see if we can get that. Next time also. Included in that. I think I want to pop into first our joint session meeting for supervisors.
One second, Javier, just so like housekeeping stuff. It sounded like we were a couple of months ago moving forward with language about Airbnbs in town. And I it sounded like we'd had good discussion here as council about what we were interested in and that felt like he could write it up. So I think that would be a good thing to have in front of us for work session September. And then I know we'd have to call public hearing and all that stuff too.
We said like a specific Airbnb work.
That's right. So that we.
Does it have that?
That's right. The request was so that we don't get in this situation of favoritism or, you know, so that we're just and it gets it off our plate. If we could write something.
That is confusing. I was talking to that one. Pamela, she. She wanted to have it below. This is some confusion about where they could. Especially if you sort by rights, so that'd be good.
Understood. I can ask Matt for that September one session.
Thanks.
You know, Matt, to hop into. Join me for a surprise. I've been working with the county clerk. Regards to that, I thank everyone for buying their ability. Seems like everybody's been very flexible and appreciate that on my side. Beyond that, I wanted to. Ask if. Maybe we use this work session to share interests in regards to. Preference for location. I think I've had some council members express that we'd like to in person also. Just kind of checking the type track, seeing if not, that we can be agreeable. I would like a little bit of context. Would we let me ask? Their presence here or would we want to make a red trip?
I'd rather get out of your subs. You might not have.
Right, I think that's where's the AC running? And space is also something to consider.
It's nice to see another space too. But I know it's. All right. I asked for it was by the way soon. Kind of all.
Yeah. If they have a worse space, that might be better.
Might be nice for them too.
Yeah, might be nice to go up and see them.
Understood. An important topic would be a discussion of, well, sort of be separate topics we'd like to share.
Which date are we looking at, you know?
Right now, I've done relatively good availability between October twelfth and twenty-sixth and nine. But I want to be shoutable date once I have office a little bit of concrete.
Keep us posted.
Yeah, do you want that discussion now?
If it's easier.
Yeah.
To provide an opportunity for us to speak, are we?
September. Let's do it. I know I have notes somewhere from our last meeting that I want to. Wrote it down so I didn't have to remember. Yeah, so, yeah, but that's a finite for September.
Any other questions for the town clerk? Under. You got something else? Oh, okay. You hesitated too long.
I know. Too polite, yes. Last thing I wanted to share was. I kind of jumped in. I spoke with Inspector Bauer today about Splash Park. He wanted to check our interests as town council and see what progress has been done on account. Frankly, we kind of stayed in the same position where we shared for it. For parts of America to come back with. Feasible sites. Spoke with Matt earlier today. Bauer mentioned to me, maybe it's about us taking initiative for finding something. A magical size, second size was an issue. Finding something feasible, maybe it's making it smaller. Splash Park. Make it something viable here forward. I think something that might be worth while considering as town councils that. Even if we aren't in matching, there might this might have to be something that comes out of the law. Or a budget to match the rest, I think. Still be prudent to not expect that need to find rates to cover. The additional costs for us, just for developments. I think we have to kind of. I want to get temperature around how much we are of the budget and also to see if something like. People willing to all kind of shepherd this through. We're kind of running to. Tools in our to be able to decide.
I may have misunderstood. I thought that the. Wouldn't be paying for it and then the county oversees it. I thought I, for some reason, I thought it was going to fall under like Albemarle Parks and Rec. And I for some reason, I thought that we weren't paying for it. And I could add that this is just me recollecting from a meeting that happened.
That was that was my recollection too, that we that our. Would we make a. Not a proposal, the. It's not a resolution, thank you. Was just kind of like thumbs up. We like this idea.
Yeah, we all jumped on a yes real quick. And I feel like if we were paying for it, we wouldn't have all jumped to yes.
Yeah, but I think that was my understanding was that it was sort of like no cost to the town on county land in a county park. And then, so that was it. So if we're looking for a spot, I'm assuming we have to find it. In county. In a county park.
Once just our idea was maybe ask our suspect to come down again.
Yeah. I see.
Beyond just that resolution.
Yeah. Yeah, right, okay.
I talked to John too, but. It seemed like the ideal place is that place next to the post office. But from what I understand, that they don't want to sell that land unless they sell the post office. Is that what it is? So the county would have to buy both if they did that, but that would be the ideal place. I think it's gotta be near the plumbing, you know. And I don't know where else you'd put it. Unless you have a real small place somewhere.
Right beside the the restroom, tennis court.
That's right.
That's all the space and then the park, then the playground.
That I think that. If it's small. Yeah.
How are you finished?
Yeah.
I like being at home.
Yeah. I went to an event for Charlotte. I'm a current board member of C three. I'm a collaborator. I went to meet some employees. Remembering this last Saturday, an event at James River Brewery on D eighteen. A major on impact is primarily focused on. Resources that don't own theirs, community owners that kind of do some hard footprint. It's kind of an open invitation to those who are interested. It's Thursday, day eight, five to six thirty. Arrangement for brewery. That will be a Thursday, next Thursday, very exact. So I meant for now I want to kind of share that, share with community members who might be interested in this. It's a good resource to learn a little bit about those energy efficient. Issues you can do at all in front of the nation to solar panels, to programs that other agencies are providing.
You know, one of the things maybe you could bring up to me too, just related to the sprinkler park too. Somebody mentioned to me that. Environmentally, sprinkler parks, you know, could could waste a lot of water. I'm not sure if they're recyclable water, but maybe it's just electricity. But, you know, evaporates in the air too and it's and with the water shortages in certain places that that could be a concern. So I mean, that might maybe they know about those kind of issues with sprinkler parks.
I could follow up.
Our carryover topics are one tonight, and that is this. Many charges and responsibilities, and I know that Mr. Heisen has some. Some concerns and some good comments about some things that he saw in here and perhaps I'll just turn it over to.
Well, we haven't had the government services are just going to get this and we've worked on it tomorrow, so I want to see what their concerns are, but. I I think really the the people on the liaisons, if they they need to weigh in on this, we could bring it back next meeting, but. My only concern initially was like, I think everybody needs to have like. Time either a monthly or bi-monthly, quarterly. And kind of like the day they you meet, so so. It's kind of good information about that, but I think we plan to go over a little, you know, tomorrow. And there's not one with a new committee. She's going to weigh in on that, but I think. So I think is that in farmer's market, that means, you know, the two that are not, they're on hold, that I think they need to be. Subsumed by the some other committees until they unless they become an independent committee. Because otherwise they're like farmer's market, there's issues with that and I I dressed that math. So I think somebody needs some, you know, that needs to be under something or maybe under events and tourism. Until we find out what's that's all about. Those are my initial issues, but we're gonna. You do tomorrow, so we can bring it. So we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but if something got here that on your committee that you don't want or you do want. Let us know and we can bring back the draft next week or next month.
Okay, I think the enhancement project oversight committee for the new people was just established when we were doing streetscape. Had to have somebody oversee.
That's a temporary committee.
When that was basically that was for.
I don't know.
Barry Grove was in charge of that.
You might, you know, as far as farmer's market does, just just reading this description. Description is is basically the description of the market manager. So I don't, this this committee may be redundant in other words.
Right.
Cause I I think the market manager is actually already doing all of these things. And is working directly with Matt as town administrator on those issues. So I I would suggest striking that committee. Simply because that's what that's what the manager's doing. They recruit vendors, they operate the market. They and she has increased the volume of business activity at the pavilion. She's like, got ideas for growing the market. So I feel like. I I don't know if it's.
Well, I think it should be under the committee, so we've got a lot of people looking at that because they they had two mistakes just this last month. With the handicap parking and then they put this fake sign and and that was not, nobody else, there was no oversight of that also, I think.
Well, the other thing we can do for oversight, we kind of like talked with maintenance.
Right.
Especially since the market manager is paid staff, we could have a market, we could invite her to work sessions.
Yes.
And I really think that would solve some of these issues that we had a week, a monthly update from our manager here. To council about what's going on with the market, then we can get that oversight and feedback rather than leaving it as a committee.
Yes.
Feels like something.
Yeah, pretty under another.
Anything else that you'd like to mention from government services?
Well, well. No, well, as far as governments, I think there's a couple of other issues we're gonna work on tomorrow. Start looking at some website and I didn't even know this this woman that's here last. There's actually regulations with handicap on the website, which I didn't even know. She brought it to our attention is like, I guess the websites have to be on. You know, oh, you know, seen as far as handicap accessible as far as what's what's there and what's on there. So then we're gonna do that. I think we're gonna look at the clutter organs and. And maintenance, we're looking at, that's a big one, maintenance. And I guess that's some of government services, although it's not truly listed, but. The main issues, this is the biggest issue. And I'm real mad about that and. We will discuss that to try to make some and. You know, we're looking at that, what's maintenance for the town and what's purification, so kind of breaking that up. So anyway, that's that's what we're doing tomorrow. We've got quite a few things on it.
Anybody else have anything? Any other business?
Yeah. Travel public safety infrastructure committee. Something that's discussed over the last couple of months. It was a public safety and health committee and. Again, I'll say that we went through a pandemic and nothing was ever given to the committee or really sent back. So if you can't do business in there on a pandemic, when can you do it in terms of public safety? I think it's still redundancy to use Zach's phrase between government services. And the people I served with on that committee for a brief period of time. Or just your tour this committee, not also than just the number front. In other words, something is brought to this committee. I would say street signs, then it goes to that committee, but hell, we're gonna pay for it, and then it comes back. We have to get somebody to contract up there with the level. So stuff's going to get bounced back and forth, I think. Right now. Ali Morris, at the last. Councilman, she expressed intentions in both of these. Again, I'll say.
Again, I'll say, uh, at least she has enough to do where he doesn't need another hour to meeting every month. And I'm really excited. So we're a committee of three that hasn't met yet. So, uh. As of today, it's on, I'll go back. To individuals and say, how do you feel about this? And I might input from everybody. I think, you know, just coaches and happen committees, you don't need a committee all the time.
You'd mentioned previously Eddie, kind of making it like an as needed committee.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
We, we need a lot though.
It does. Cause it does feel like, cause while it does, there are some things that fall into like government services. It could also be public safety. We do feel like government services has its, like some of its own stuff that aren't necessarily public safety, but, and so.
I think when you get into infrastructure, we're talking about the living, we're talking about sidewalks.
Right.
P talk and, and everybody in your.
Well, in the, in the infrastructure, we often deal with it as a council. That often is either happening in the office with Matt or tapping on planning commissioner at this body.
Right.
So we could probably strike the infrastructure component entirely from that committee.
Well, I guess everybody just needs to find out what they want this committee to do. I'm a little.
If he comes, if he comes to these meetings regularly, it's almost like, what, what are they?
Well, I'll use Kevin Quirto as an example, who's, he points out a lot of things we talked about in here. In fact, um, they probably wouldn't go, go to the table, having not mentioned that. Build what's the same way, product, you know, cancel and, um. That sounds more like this. Uh, hybrid committee, if you will, than governmental services. So that, I like to say that it's an overlap, it doesn't need to be. And I, I, you know, I've been there at service committee, but I would need everybody to go. To just determine what exactly you want.
Yeah.
And this question, I haven't got the right.
Sounds, sounds like a question for government service.
I guess, so, so the question, this is what I can bring up to is to. Do you even have a committee or to make it part of another committee or to just.
Or to make it.
Make it part of this committee, I mean, this group. What's the, what's the question we got?
Well, that was the original thing we did. Uh, public safety was police, fire, rescue. And we had, um. We turned out from police and fire, uh, rescue was kind of, uh, asked invited. And yeah, we had discussions, but really had no major issues during my tenure there, uh. You know, bring back and just have roundtable discussions and. Bring, you know, bring out that idea back to council.
I'll bring it up.
The tough bit for Kevin's more, we showed it up.
He should be there. He should be there.
In fact, everybody would get suggestions.
Yeah.
So do you, you think we just should get it in the way with public safety committee and. Would you suggest some, some other need in town that we should have a committee oversee?
But I'm just seeing the same topics that would be addressed, you know, under this job description, description. Uh, that we discussed in government services, do we rebuild?
Yeah. So we can, yeah, put this through. And you can come.
And I come, I come, you know, tomorrow.
But we could call it, I probably need, there's only.
And then if we see where it needs to be split up.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, Chief Jenkins gives a break, you know?
Yeah.
Before, and just at this session, it's basically the same thing. He would bring to the public safety meeting.
Yeah.
But it's just something to think about because I, I don't want, uh, Ms. Morris to be turned off by the fact that, you know, she's being ignored.
She's not gonna be ignored.
You two could always be co-chairmen of government services.
Yeah, Cody is a whip, not true.
And, uh, you know, tag team or whatever you needed to do.
Stotzes. I want Stotz to stay there. He's doing a great job.
He is.
We're fortunate, we're fortunate to have something like that.
This is just a good date before we're gonna combine to.
But you don't have to come once you really want to. It's the second, it's the, it's Tuesday, the second, first, second Tuesday, right? Second Tuesday, four o'clock.
It's Tuesday after the walk.
And you could come or. But you. This is something. That could be an issue if there's a, some, I'm thinking, like you say, hey, how about this? That's, I don't want it to be public.
I just, I'm not sure. Mr. Payne and I and Matt and Javier talked about, you know, how do I get before the council, like planning for a new police department? There were.
Yeah, that might be.
Message boards, traffic message board for the town, for like special events in town. You know, we had talked, I think.
Yeah.
Before you got in council about fuel prices, but now it's like it's gone down. But, um, you know, fuel pumps that we explored, a rescue squad, maybe that comes back up again once that. Situation is resolved before October, November of this year. I'm just not sure where to bring these things.
Think that would be the place, because it sounds like we're, we, we do finance. Is that right? So we do finance, maybe, that budget is, I guess, probably. Yes, that would be, I don't know where else finance is in this thing. Actually, I'm fairly new to this too, but I think it seems, sounds like budgets are an issue.
Finance contract information technology.
Yes.
I don't know. That's all right in there.
It'll be the time to come for us. Yeah.
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, four o'clock here.
But then, but then, but yeah, but I think there is, you know, to Eddie's point, I think there is some significant redundancy. Public safety committee had previously existed.
And that's.
I think that's right.
But I, I think too, you know, I don't know when the public safety committee was started back in history of committees. But I know in this, I'm not talking bad about any previous chiefs. But a lot of times we didn't know what was going on with the police department except from the head of the public safety committee. They just have us informed about what was going on with the police department. They don't have the nice full reports that Chief Jenkins has given us. So we have all this information presented. So it probably is not necessary to have it as a separate committee at this point in time. But back when I first started, we didn't, we didn't get those good reports, you know, how's things going, chief? Well, yeah, everything's okay. And then, you know, public safety committee chairman is the one that told council what was going on with the police department. So.
And I think too, you know, uh, going back to police, fire and rescue, uh, the fire department, they needed something, they, they found somebody here. It's a mess, council and, uh, ACFR has sent, uh, the department down on their papers to meet with. So they got that access to a, a response time type of call or if you will. Uh, and they're just the one, the fire department next door. I've got it on my cell phone. And, uh, so.
You all just.
No complaints. So people still run out in the, or rescue number, they say, yeah, things going. And additionally, there were some faulty spots that seems like over the last, you know, four years now. They looked at it a little bit better.
Yeah, I'm just working out so, you know, questions need to get answered and projects can get started and completed.
Uh, I, I've got a pretty good view of what's going on up in our throes when you come by. You know, I could hear when they crank up dinner and I have, we're no complaints. So somebody step forward as far as this.
Any other comments from anybody? All right. Well, we'll get out of this warm room, although it's not as hot as it could have been. Thank y'all. See you next week.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mr. Bowling.